Good morning, everyone. At this time, I'll open the Crow Wing County Committee of the whole meeting for October 20th, 2020. Our first item, well, excuse me just for a second, there's Commissioner Brecken, Commissioner Barrows, and Commissioner Hoag in the room, Commissioner Coring, and Commissioner Franzine, we're not sure of. Commissioner Coring was gonna...
There's Mr. [inaudible].
Excuse me, Commissioner Franzine has just entered the room. Commissioner Coring was going to attend via Teams was the last word we had. So with that, the first presentation we have is from Mr. Blank and Judge Casey. If you gentlemen will come up to the table here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, thank you.
Do anything with these, or? Well, thank you very much for allowing us to be on your agenda and to come and present to you some information about the Evergreen Cemetery Association. We did have a open house as such in August, late August, and invited city council members and county board members. Commissioner Barrow was the only one who was able to make that meeting, and he strongly suggested we schedule something to be able to present the information to the entire board. So that's what we're here to do this morning, is to tell you a little bit about Evergreen Cemetery Association in the event that you're not familiar with us, but also to let you know about the changes occurring in cemetery business, and quite frankly, the funeral business as well. So you have the information in front of you, I don't want to simply read it, we'll summarize it, but Evergreen Cemetery Association is really made up of two different cemeteries. The primary one is Evergreen in the city, located within the city limits of Brainerd, and then Memorial Gardens located out north of Brainerd on County Road 25. Evergreen Cemetery dates back to about the same time as the founding of the city of Brainerd. Our first burials occurred in 1873. In 1879, the cemetery was chartered under Minnesota statutes, and we are designated a 501(c)(13), which is a unique IRS designation for public cemeteries, nonprofit public cemeteries. And by that designation, we cannot discriminate in terms of who may be buried there, as long as they purchase a lot and our gravesite, we respond to those needs accordingly. So as a nonprofit, for the last 141 years, we have operated without governmental assistance from the city of Brainerd, or from the county, or from the state. Evergreen originally occupied about 15 acres, we now have a little more than 40 acres that are all plotted out as such, all usable ground for all practical purposes, has been plotted out or laid out for grave sites. We have over 17,000 remains that we're responsible for at Evergreen, so it's an important task for us to maintain the cemetery. Memorial Gardens located out north of town is about a 25-acre site, half of which has been laid out for grave sites and is currently being maintained in that manner. Memorial Gardens has an interesting history in that in the 1950s, it was developed as a for-profit cemetery. Folks were sold a gravesite, a vault, a marker, and that's what they expected. However, sometime in the 1960s, the developers disappeared, leaving folks who had invested and bought the sites at Memorial Gardens just hanging as such. They created a new association, and then subsequently with special legislation in the 1970s, it was combined with the Evergreen Cemetery Association, and thus we have the two cemeteries to maintain. We have looked at Memorial Gardens as a cemetery of the future for the area and have done a master plan as such, knowing how it can be expanded then in the future. There are about 3,500 remains currently at Memorial Gardens, so the total that we're responsible for is in excess of 20,000 remains. In addition to the charter that was established in 1879, there are bylaws, of course, for our association, but we are basically controlled by state statute, Chapter 306, defines our operation, defines responsibilities of the board. The board then, under those conditions, is responsible to staff the cemetery as necessary. We have a nine-member Board of Trustees, all of whom are volunteers. We receive no compensation. I listed them there. All of the trustees are connected somehow through family association with the cemetery. In fact, to be a trustee or a member of the association, you either own a lot or are an heir to a lot as such. Currently, our staffing is bare bones, as far as we're concerned. We have a full-time superintendent, the only full-time employee, and unfortunately, in some respects, he retires the end of this month after more than 30 years with the cemetery. We're in the process of trying to hire a new superintendent. In addition to the superintendent, we have a half-time executive director, and then in the summertime, we have some seasonal employees to help with grounds maintenance. You may have heard cemeteries have a perpetual care fund, that's established by statute in which 20% of the sale of a grave goes into a perpetual care fund. It's restricted. We have a somewhat healthy perpetual care fund of more than $600,000 at the present time, but those are restricted funds in that only the interest earnings off of those funds can be used for operation. So where does our income come from? Well, it comes from primarily the sale of a grave, and then the next major item is the burial fees, the opening and closing of a grave. We do all of the monument and marker setting, there's some fees involved with that, of course perpetual care fund earnings and donations from the community. It's interesting that donations from the community have now exceeded the revenue generated from the perpetual care fund, simply because the interest rates are as low as they are. Well, the big change that's happening and occurring as far as cemetery business is concerned and funeral business is the cultural change of cremation. Minnesota seems to be out in front in some respects, but currently about 75% of all deaths in Minnesota result in cremation. The final disposition of a body is cremation or burial. The impact on cemeteries is the fact that of the 75% of those cremated, probably only 25% of the ashes are buried in cemeteries. There are other venues available to families, of course. Churches have constructed columbariums, some churches have scattering gardens, and then, of course, there are families who simply scatter ashes on dad's favorite hunting grounds or wherever it might be, so people are finding a different venue in some respects. The other impact on Evergreen, as far as we're concerned, is the veteran cemetery at Camp Ripley. Certainly, we're not opposed to providing for veterans, I'm a veteran of the Marine Corps, so I can relate to that, but it becomes competition, and almost unfair competition in that the veterans can be buried at no cost, and we still have to charge for services at Evergreen. Anyway, that's the big change that's occurring, and it's impacted the operations at Evergreen significantly, and I would call your attention to the graph that's in the packet of information that indicates the decrease in burials and grave sites that have been sold in the last, well, going back to 1995, 25-year period. 25 years ago, we were doing more than 160 burials per year. We're down now to 80 and less, and this year, it seems like the decline continues as well. So we're operating with less income. We're doing what we can to reduce costs. We have responded to the issues by reducing staff, we've deferred major maintenance. However, we have been blessed in the sense that the community and the public has stepped up their donations and specified what they would like to see their donations used for. Just recently, we had an individual donate over $6,000 specifically to replace dead trees, dying trees at Memorial Gardens, so the public is responding to the needs, and we, this year particularly, have had unusual needs. You may recall an article in the newspaper where we experienced vandalism that was in excess of $3,000 to repair. Unseasonal rains in the Evergreen area resulted in some serious erosion problems on the westerly edge of the property, and so we've experienced some additional costs there. And our old office building as such, we had to re-roof, and we're in the process of reciting, so through the generosity of the community, we've been able to proceed with some of those kind of major improvements. But overall, we've had to look at deferred maintenance. We've adjusted fees to be more in line with communities the size of Brainerd, but we can only go so far with that because there is competition for us. City of Baxter, City of Niswah, Lake Shore, Crosby, Ironton, all operate cemeteries, and they're supported by local government. There are some church cemeteries and township cemeteries as well, so we can only raise our fees so much because people are shopping, looking for the best deal for the family, so to speak. So we are fortunate to have on our board Gary Bluth, who many of you may know, is a retired CPA, and of course, we got him to be treasurer right off, and after a couple years, he said, "How long do you think we can keep going here with this deficit financing?" And we said, "Well, why don't you tell us?" And so he put together a little projection sheet that's in the packet of information as well. His latest projections tell us that in 2023, we're going to be seriously in the red, and so our goal today and has been since August is to get the information out to those who are really, ultimately become responsible in the event of default, but more importantly, to let you know what's happening, so that if we do get to that point of going under, we don't want to hear somebody say, "How come we never heard about this before?", because it is, you know, a valid concern. We end up concluding that with the bleak projections for the future. If we're going to continue, we really are looking for some assistance from the city and the county. We have presented to the full city council, the city administrator and mayor expressed serious interest in us helping out eventually, and I've had visitation with Administrator Tim Hool, and he's clearly aware of our difficult situation that we're faced with. So we are certainly open for any questions that you might have about the Evergreen Cemetery Association, and I'll let Fred make a few comments because he summarizes very well.
Well, the only thing I'd like to add is, you know, I was born and raised in Brainerd, I've lived in the area all my life. I have great-grandparents, grandparents buried at Evergreen. My parents are buried in Memorial Gardens. I have lots in Memorial Gardens where I plan to be buried, my wife to be buried. All those years, I simply assumed that the cemeteries received some kind of public support. I wrote a little blurb in the paper one day that they were looking for volunteers to serve on the board, and I raised my hand, and it was only after I raised my hand that I discovered that we're totally out there on our own. I think that these cemeteries are a very valuable asset to our community and to our area, both from a historical standpoint and more so from a personal standpoint, and I believe firmly that they deserve the support of the community. Thank you.
I found it interesting when I was out there for the meeting that took place at the office there, that this is an island within the city of Brainerd. Brainerd doesn't even have control of that. Was that correct, when I understood that?
That's correct.
So that was a very interesting piece to me because I never, and I grew up in northeast, I grew up right next to the cemetery, and it just, you always thought that was part of Brainerd. You never thought of it being set aside as something special like that, other than the people that are buried there were special. But that was just a real point that I had never thought about, and certainly financing cemeteries, you know you buy the lot or the plot and all the other expenses that go with it, but you don't realize that really that's a one-and-done in terms of the cemetery, because then you have your ongoing operations, the maintenance of everything, and those costs are going up like they are for every other business in our community. So again, ignorance on my part, not realizing through the years that those pieces are there and that there is no real revenue stream that is consistent, I guess would be the best way of saying it, other than the graciousness of people and people wanting to put their loved ones in an area that's probably accessible to them for the most part, although as generations move on, it's probably less and less because our kids move away and there we sit in Evergreen or Memorial. So, and I do have two sons out there, and I have grandparents out there, and I have a stepfather out there, so it is personal, as you noted. So I just find the dilemma interesting, and I don't think most people think about cemeteries and the finances that go with it, and the upkeep that has to be maintained over the course of years. So I know that I was very touched by that meeting, and certainly, I think we, from my perspective, I want to look at, is there a way for us to assist in that, I guess, that bad situation that you're in? Now, the cash flow sheet that you presented, Dwayne, the cash flow sheet that you presented is for both cemeteries together, correct?
Yes, both are part of one association, and we don't differentiate the funds, the income off of either one, or do we track, you know, where we're spending money in terms of maintenance? It's all one operation.
Okay. And this may be a foolish question, but in the course of time in the maintenance, and I'm probably thinking more of the lawn mowing and that upkeep that takes place every week in the summer, have you ever enlisted volunteers from some of the, like the Boy Scouts or other organizations like that to assist? I know at one time, STS with our jail population was utilized, that's currently not being utilized and is on hold at this point.
Yeah, we do encourage volunteerism. In fact, the last mowing that was done at Memorial Gardens this fall was done by a volunteer, former MINDOT maintenance foreman. He saw the article in the paper, called me up and volunteered. We have had two or three Eagle Scout projects now that Boy Scouts have been involved in. One was a monument cleaning effort, and the young man did research on what kind of chemicals could be used on the marble or the granite markers, and then he put together a video, and that's on our website, of how to best clean monuments, and then he, along with his troop and parents, on one weekend cleaned over 500 monuments in the old part of the cemetery. So we have had volunteers at work, we have had office help doing certain tasks that could be easily, you know, a trainable task for a volunteer that could come in. We have one gentleman that does a lot of work for what they call Find a Grave, and that's really just keeping records up to date. So yes, we've solicited volunteers. Everybody seems to be busy and maybe don't give much thought to it, but we typically run an ad in the RSVP program on a regular basis.
I know when I was there, I think I mentioned Sourcewell as a potential place to work with them on getting some interns to come in, and even the local colleges and that, to, because I know there was an issue or there is an ongoing issue of upgrading the records to an electronic record versus the old paper and pen. And I know that when I was out there when my mother-in-law passed away and was exposed to all the, trying to go back and find the records of what plot she had purchased, and so I know that's an issue for the office operation there. And so I encouraged at that time, both when I was at the meeting with you folks and then with the office personnel a few years ago, to look at that and see if there were some grants available through Sourcewell for some help that would come in and help upgrade those records. Has that been done, do you know?
How would we answer that? Well, I mean, we have continued to work on it. One of the difficulties is that the executive director has changed over in the last year, and so there's a certain amount of lag time in picking up on projects that were underway before as they acclimate, or as she acclimates herself to a whole new position. So certainly something we would be willing to look at in the future.
Sure. Any questions from the other commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, is there a state association for cemeteries? Because I mean, the problem that we're faced with here has got to be statewide nationally, you know, either state and national issue. Is there any kind of a state organization for cemeteries?
There is a Minnesota Association of Cemeteries. However, well, our most recent executive director served as president for a year of the Cemetery Association. What we find, though, is they represent the big boys in the business, you know, the metropolitan sites especially, and so a lot of the issues that they're dealing with and promoting, in some respects, don't apply to us, but we have been able to, you know, receive appropriate advice on sticky issues. So the rest of your comment, there...
Well, that, yeah, I mean, as long as we know there's an association we can work with that we can use as a resource and find out what maybe other communities are doing to see what advice is coming out to do that. The local ministerial association, have they been involved in this discussion with you?
I'm sorry?
The local ministerial, the local churches and ministers together, have they been involved in this discussion with you?
We did a couple years ago have a general mailing of information, particularly when we invested in a columbarium out at Memorial Gardens to pass that information on because we were getting demands or requests for that kind of service. It hasn't materialized to the extent that we had hoped for, but we ended up then doing a master plan for that area so that that columbarium area could grow as demand also went up. But we still have a lot of cremation burial sites at Evergreen, because they're three feet by three feet rather than five by 10, and so we've been able to utilize space in Evergreen that would not accommodate traditional burials. So again, it becomes a cost factor, and what, there is a certain affinity to Evergreen, there's no question about it. If they have roots in the immediate Brainerd area, Evergreen kind of is the attraction when need arises, and as you mentioned, oftentimes, people aren't thinking ahead in doing that planning, they're waiting till at need time to make a decision, and then it's, you know, emotion involved and what have you, so.
Okay. I also see, according to this graph that you gave us, the grave sales have probably gone up from 18 to 19? It looks like the number of graves that have been, sites that have been sold. It looks like the number of graves that have been, sites that have been sold in that year.
Kind of a follow-up to your earlier comment about, you know, advice and whatnot. We are aware of the city of Worthington and Nobles County entering into some sort of joint powers agreement to pick up the deficit of operations for the cemetery in Worthington. An attorney who is also a certified funeral director and oftentimes provides legal advice to the Cemetery Association has been involved in that particular case and others because we find that the cemetery, the statutes related to cemeteries when it comes to default are not absolutely clear. It is clear in terms of townships requiring to take over a cemetery. It's a little bit unclear as to cities and how the counties might be involved other than unorganized territories.
To go back to your question though, obviously from the graph, sales did go up from 2018 to 2019. 2020 is a very strange year, as you well know. We went for a long time with no burials dictated by COVID.
Right.
And, you know, frankly, I don't know where that's going.
Right. And I understand that what I'm about to say doesn't impact the bottom line that you have here and the issue that's going to come up in 2023. But have you ever contemplated adopt a section of the cemetery to, so if, like MINDOT does where you adopt a mile or whatever, to maintain that section of it? So you divide your 40 acres at Evergreen into 40 sections or 80 sections, whatever you might want to do to make it easier to attract people that would? And I say that because when I was out there one time, there was an individual who was where my mother-in-law's grave is, had brought his lawnmower out there and he was mowing numerous, he was going up and down, you know, between the rows there, mowing everybody's property. And I know he's not an employee there and he just was doing it out of the graciousness of his heart and what he felt and he had a person that had been buried there too, but he didn't stop at just the one grave, he was going to do many before he was done. And so that might be something to consider and I realize that's more of an in-kind thing, doesn't help the cash flow situation, but it certainly helps on the maintenance side. And this time of year with all your leaves that fall out there, it's got to be a horrendous job to try to pick all that up and move it.
We do have folks who are interested in doing something and volunteering. As an example, a gentleman a couple of years ago decided that every spigot, watering spigot should have a milk jug tied to it so people can water their flowers conveniently and no one has to bring. And so we said, well, yes, go ahead, put them up throughout the cemetery and he's done that now particularly prior to Memorial Day for the last probably five or six years. So people are interested in helping and we certainly encourage that. It's a matter of, you know, coordinating and supervising and overseeing the volunteers too, so that, so.
Okay. Any Commissioner Corrigan? Any questions for these two gentlemen?
Thank you. First, I want to say thanks to Dwayne and the entire board for what you're doing out there, volunteering. I really appreciate it very much. You kind of in a way answered a question that I had in my mind is, Dwayne, what are, what the statutes, apparently you said are not very clear when it comes to default of, you know, if you can't, if you can't, if the association can't maintain the cemetery anymore, so the statutes aren't clear on what would happen at that point then, Dwayne?
There is information in the statutes, Commissioner, in terms of a friendly takeover, if you will, but it's unclear in terms of cities, within cities, if it's a unfriendly takeover as such or a default. The statute seems to be clear if it's a rural cemetery within a township, that the township becomes responsible for the operation of the cemetery. That's pretty clear. But within cities, it isn't so clear in that regard. And so I think as a result, the history to date is to simply try to work out a friendly agreement to keep the cemetery operating without the county government or city government taking over operations.
You know, here's the way I look at it, excuse me, here's the way I look at it is, as we're sitting here as the county board, actually we should be sitting as the town board of unorganized territory because that's how it affects us sitting on this board is because Memorial Gardens is in unorganized territory. And if you did default, I think, I personally think it would be just like a, like a township where we would, it would default to the township and we'd have to take over. You know, the cemetery in Brainerd, to me, that would, that would have to revert to the city of Brainerd. So I think in my mind, it would be two separate cemeteries at that point. As you know, Dwayne, you know, I've worked at Nelson Dorn for 25 years, so I've known Rusty for 25 years, your superintendent of the grounds there, who does a tremendous job. And I will say you're going to be hard pressed to find somebody that has the knowledge of where, where you're going to put that grave in, you know, and to, you know, when it's 30 below and somebody still wants to do that burial, to be able to get the backhoe started and do that, this is, this is, this is a lot bigger deal than you really realize. So I guess the way I would look at it is, I, I certainly think that we have a moral responsibility. My God, there's a governor of the state of Minnesota buried in Evergreen. So there's a lot of history there and if you ever walk through the cemetery, just the other day I was there and there's a stone that is, it's like a, I don't know if the family was in logging or what, but their gravestone is like a log. I'm sure you've seen that, Dwayne. But I guess the way I look at it is, is if this does get to a point of default, I would see my vote going to have the unorganized township take over that cemetery north of Brainerd and then, then it would be up to the city and the association to figure out what's going to happen in Brainerd. That's the way I kind of look at it. I don't know, I guess I'd be interested in your thoughts.
Well, as I said earlier, we operate both cemeteries as one. Evergreen, as you know, is, we do not have a lot of product left to sell in terms of vacant or unused grave sites. Not that all of the graves are occupied and for instance, my own family, there's still five of the eight to be filled up, but we don't have a lot of product to sell. We continue to research records and make sure that we can identify any unused available grave sites. But the future, as I said earlier, also somewhat is Memorial Gardens. And that's why we invested in a professional master plan prepared by Westwood and Associates probably about 10 years ago now. So it certainly could be possible to split them, but historically now since the 1970s, they've been operated as one.
Administrator Hul, did you have something you'd like to say?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I've had extensive conversations with Dwayne and you guys all know that because I keep you up to date on it. And in my research, I can only find one county in the state of Minnesota, it is Nobles, that has an arrangement to care for a cemetery. Most often, cemeteries are the purview of cities and townships. I passed around a list of the cities and townships in Crow Wing County and so if you didn't, could you pass that down? And I apologize, Commissioner Corrigan, you don't have that list, but it's a pretty long list of cemeteries within Crow Wing County and what you're going to see on there is a lot of city names and a lot of township names. I agree with Dwayne as it relates to the statute is not entirely clear, but I think it is clearer that if the Evergreen Cemetery Association were to go belly up, that the Memorial Gardens portion of it would probably revert to the unorganized territory and be our responsibility. I believe it is better for us, if we have a volunteer board, continue to serve in that capacity to running it and to keeping it afloat and for all of the other historical reasons about the history and our families and who's in those cemeteries. I would suggest there is, I think, Commissioner Corrigan, you said a moral obligation and I think I would put it much the same. As I looked at their finances, what I could see was that so far, year to date, through August, their 25,000 over budget had projected to be, their annual budget is to be a negative balance, fund balance, drawdown, if you will, 64,000. So adding those two together, you're planning on drawing 64,000 down, plus you're running 25,000 negative. That puts their deficit at about a 90 grand deficit and I don't think we can fund all of that $90,000 deficit. If you look at their fund balance drawdown, let's see, that's the cash flow projections, what you see is that their, their ending cash balance each year is going down by about 40,000 a year, but you have to add the additional deficit in. And so I think they're suggesting that they will be out of funds in 2023 and I don't think, I don't think that's accurate. I think they're going to be out of funds in 2022. And so waiting to act, I think, is going to make it just more difficult for all of us to act. I am suggesting that if you are inclined to doing something here, do it as the unorganized township. There are too many cemeteries in Crow Wing County for Crow Wing County to take on that burden and counties don't traditionally do so. So think about your action exclusively, as Commissioner Corrigan was suggesting, just as the first assessment district town board. My, if you're going to do something to help these folks based on their finances, I am making a suggestion of $20,000 contribution for them and I would suggest that the contribution should be made in 2021, even though we have already set the preliminary levy. The first assessment district fund balance is adequate to cover that expense and it seems to me that if we wait, it might be double. And so I think it's smart for us to move now. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that, but that is my suggestion. If you're going to act, act as the first assessment district, $20,000 contribution. I want to go back to when Dwayne and I met, I kept asking him, what's the ask? What's the ask? Here's the ask. One, they're asking for our understanding, our understanding of their financial issues, our understanding of the way in which their business has fundamentally changed, earth and burial versus cremation. That's just a fundamental shift in the industry and I think we all know that's probably happened within the last decade. Two, they're asking to have the board appoint a liaison and it would be someone from the first assessment district, so I would suggest probably it's Commissioner Franzen or Commissioner Brecken, but that's up to you guys, to be part of their dialogue over the course of the next year. I'm only suggesting a one-year contribution at this point. What I think makes the most sense is to make a one-time contribution at this point and then let's reevaluate whether or not we need that to be an ongoing contribution moving forward. I do believe if you make a contribution, it will increase the pressure on the city of Brainerd to do the same. I don't think you can fund or should fund Evergreen Cemetery, but if you fund Memorial Gardens, I hope it will add pressure for the city of Brainerd to fund Evergreen Cemetery. That makes the most sense to me, but they can make their own decisions. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions?
Tim, the 600,000 in restricted funds, what, who holds that money and what, is there any opportunity to tap into that?
What's the restrictions on the funds?
We cannot tap into that money. We can only use income generated by that. That money is invested on a, we, I think historically, the boards have invested that money in CDs. Well, as you know, CDs generate nothing today. In fact, you almost have to pay them to take your money. So we have gone to what we consider to be very safe investments. We're not investing in oil fields or anything of that nature. We try to invest that money as safely and as carefully as we possibly can, but still to generate some income that will produce money we can use.
So who rules that or who would, is that state statute or how does that?
State statutes.
And those were contributions that were made generally from families and they're making a contribution to a perpetual fund, the interest of which is used. And so all of the donors made those donations with those intentions and so you'd be violating the donor's intent for them to do something. Now, if they go belly up, then I think you probably can tap those resources.
Commissioner Franzen, did you have a question?
Yeah, this is a real emotional issue. My son, my dad, all of my grandparents, a lot of my aunts and uncles are all buried at Evergreen. But I can't let this be an emotional issue when you're talking about taxpayer money. So my question is, if we decide that we are going to fund Evergreen Memorial Gardens and you are still conjoined, how do we make sure that the money that we give is spent at Evergreen Memorial?
Well, in an absolute sense, I guess I would answer that by saying we would have to set up some sort of accounting system to track that. It would be an additional burden, obviously on staff that for the most part doesn't have time to get everything done that's required of the office now. I don't know if we could prorate, you know, the area that we're maintaining there versus the area we're maintaining in Brainerd at Evergreen. Now, it's about 15 acres that we maintain out at Memorial Garden, it's about 40 acres that we maintain within Brainerd, you know, so a third of the amount. I don't know, I think we'd have to give considerable thought to how we might be able to track specifically, you know, $20,000 out of 260 or whatever the annual budget is. It would be difficult.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would be difficult, but. Yeah, I think it would be difficult, but, uh, by the same token, there have been people who have privately donated money, uh, to the cemetery and said, we want this money dedicated to Memorial Gardens. And we honor those requests. Uh, but, uh, it's, it's a, an accounting factor that we don't have now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Could you go back and have a discussion though with, with, uh, Gary Bluth, Mr. Bluth? And I realize your maintenance gentleman is leaving very soon here, so it's going to be tough to have a conversation with him. But just see if there's, what the difficulty would be in, in that, and give us some feedback on that?
Yeah, I, certainly we can, we can have some conversation about that and respond to you.
Okay. I, I would appreciate that. And I, I understand Commissioner Franzine's concern is that if that, if it's specific to that township, I'll just use that term at this point, then you want to make sure that those dollars are utilized in that township and not in the sort of general fund, so to speak. Commissioner, did you have something else?
Yeah. Um, I guess I'd kind of like to address our administrator. And I'm wondering how, how much work this would be for our maintenance people who do our mowing and things in the summer. Could we possibly send them out to Memorial Gardens to maintain, to, to mow? Or could we have our people in the winter go through there with a plow and kind of, you know, that's just a thought. I don't know whether it would work, but we got to think of a lot of different ideas at this point.
It is, uh, it is legitimate, though. In fact, Dwayne had asked me for an in-kind contribution for the highway department if their backhoe breaks down. I gravitated away from that, and the reason is because it's a, it's a contribution to them in one way, shape, form, or another. And as soon as we use county staff and county resources to do that, then I'm afraid you get sucked into, well, then why aren't you doing the same thing for every cemetery throughout the county? So it, it pulled me back from it because county resources are county resources and First Assessment District resources are First Assessment District resources. And the problem for First Assessment District, of course, is they don't own a thing, and they don't have any staff. So if it was township level, then I think that would make more sense. I think there's a risk of using county staff, that it's going to beget a larger ask. That's why I gravitated away from it.
Well, I needed to know.
Mr. Chair, um, I would assume that your, your costs are in line with, with other cemeteries as far as your opening, closing, you know, the, the lot costs. Are, is there kind of a standard that, that most cemeteries stick to, or do they vary?
I, I don't think there's a standard, Commissioner, but, uh, uh, we have done a couple of times in the last 10 years, a survey, if you will, of, uh, communities of similar size to Brainerd. And, uh, we're not, uh, the lowest and we're not the highest. We tried to pick kind of an average, uh, so that we were in line with. And as I said earlier, recognizing that we can only raise those fees so far because of competition in the area. Uh, and, and, and so, uh, it, it reflects, we, we think, our, our cost of operation, uh, for the most part. Uh, the, the real issue becomes the number of burials or graves that we're selling. That has diminished significantly in, in the last, you know, 20 years. Uh, so, uh...
When is the last time that you've had an increase in, in the cost, in these costs?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I see. When was the last increase, uh, to, to the costs, you know, some of these costs?
Well, the last increase, uh, in, in terms of absolute last increase was we increased after our services, uh, we experienced the demand of, uh, after four o'clock in the afternoon or even after five o'clock in the summertime, uh, Saturdays and Sunday services as well. And so we increased the fees there to account for overtime and, and, uh, the additional impact of, of, in general. As far as the base fees, we haven't increased those probably for, uh, my guess is four or five years, uh, that we haven't, uh, had any increases. Uh, so...
Have, have you ever, have you ever projected increases and then how that would affect your, say, your 2023 deficit type, to see what by raising, you know, a couple of these costs, what, what that would do to your, to your 2023 issue? Um, so if you increased your opening and closing by $50 or something, uh, I guess just some projections to, to see how it would get you to a, maybe a break even type number?
We have not done that sort of analysis. Uh, however, just on the surface of it, uh, we, we, there'd be some real difficulty in that. Uh, if you, uh, project an increase in fees while, uh, activities are decreasing at the same time, uh, I don't know where that brings us, quite frankly. You know, does increased fees in a decreasing market, uh, drive people away from us more than they are now? I, you know, especially when they're out shopping, uh, they're looking for the best deal. And if they can, uh, go to one of the, the township cemeteries, like Dykman or, or some of the others in the county, uh, and there are no particular restrictions on, you know, they'll, they'll go there. There's no question about it. Uh, particularly if they don't have some affinity like, like, uh, several of us do with family at, at, uh, Memorial Gardens or Evergreen. Uh, so, I mean, we'd, time to look at it is never too late to, uh, you know, have a regular review of where we're at. Uh, and we do monitor, uh, well, we get, we get calls from the city of Baxter and the city of Niswau, how are you doing this or that? And even from your area, uh, inquiring, uh, what's going on in the business because all of the cemeteries are feeling the same kind of impact. There's no question about it. If only 25% of the 75% cremations are being buried in at cemeteries, all the cemeteries are, are feeling the crunch as such.
Right.
There's no question about that. Uh, so, uh, I, I, the other comment I was going to make, I appreciate your inquiry, Commissioner, in terms of, uh, maintenance and, and perhaps county forces doing maintenance at Memorial Garden. There, there's more than just maintenance involved in the cemetery business. Uh, we are required to keep extensive records. Like I said, we have over 20,000 remains that we, uh, are responsible for. And, uh, if somebody wants to know about it and where they're at, uh, we're expected to be able to give them that information. And I, I would respond to Commissioner Coring as well in terms of, uh, of, uh, the county, of course, could take over in a, uh, unorganized territory. But again, I just remind you, it's more than just maintenance of the grounds, it's coordinating burial sites, coordinating, uh, burial services, uh, maintaining the kinds of records that are required by state statute. So that's part of why I think it would be difficult to separate how much of that is really, uh, Memorial Garden operation and how much is it of Evergreen. Uh, we can look and see at what our balance is, uh, in, in the last couple of years of burials at Memorial Gardens and, and burials at Evergreen, and look at that kind of comparison, uh, more than detail of, of how much time maintenance spends or how much time the secretary spends on issues of either cemetery.
Are there more burials taking place at Memorial Gardens than Evergreen?
I, I think we're running about equals right now, and that's one thing that we'll take a look at. Uh, certainly can do that because we, we, we've tracked that each month, uh, in terms of how many burials occur and where, uh, as well as how many graves, lots are sold. So we, we do track that each month to have a record of it.
So it's interesting when, because when you talk about acreage, and I look at your 40 versus the 15, and that's about 27%, which you would think then, well, then it's about a, a third here and two thirds there. However, when you look at activity, you're saying it's about a 50-50 split, is what I'm hearing you say. So when you look at expenses, then 50% of those expenses belong to Memorial Gardens and 50 to Evergreen, even though the acreage size would speak to a different, uh, viewpoint. So it's interesting to, when I, we start talking about cost accounting, and that's what we're talking about, what numbers do you use to determine that? So that's, it's interesting. I'm just talking off the cuff here, but it, I understand the dilemma of trying to separate the two costs and what will be. So I'm probably at this point not, I'm going to ask you not to go back to Gary and ask him to figure that out. I think that we'll have a discussion here among ourselves and that to see if anybody comes up with an idea of what we might do to assist. And we'll figure out if we can get that on a, on a board meeting. And with that, at this point, I appreciate your, your presentation, both when we're out at the cemetery and today. Very thoughtful, very insightful, and I appreciate it. Any final questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Casey?
If I could just make one final comment.
Sure.
You know, today we've concentrated on talking about money. But equally important to me, I think, is, uh, to piggyback on Mr. Hul's comment, having a liaison with the county board, that we could sit down with, uh, somebody representing the county, get somebody representing the city, so that we're all at the same table. And we're not going back and forth trying to communicate ideas. Uh, so if somebody could be, either one person or a, or a committee could be appointed to work with us and sit down with us and look at the future, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. And I just made a note of that, so we will consider that approach also. And I, and I think that probably would be a good, good one. And perhaps that would encompass all the cemeteries in the county too, and what our role would be there. So I appreciate it, and I thank you very much. It's been a very robust conversation here today.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, it, for, for me, it's been an interesting experience to learn about the death industry.
Well, we're all getting there.
Yes.
Dwayne, can I have one of those? No, just one. Oh, sure. Thanks.
So I'm going to take a five-minute recess. I'm sorry to do that at this point. It's been a, a long hour here, but, um, five minutes, and then we'll be back.